Good morning. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, March 3, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order at this time and ask if there's any declarations of interest. Seeing none, I will move along to community announcements. Perhaps I could start with Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just now that the coldest night of the year has come and gone, and I'm assuming that members of committee are going to speak about that, but I did want to congratulate our team captain and the wonderful results. But I did want to start the plug for the run for South Lake. It's on Sunday, April 26, and Team EG is registered and looking for team members. And if you can't join us, then we're happy to accept your pledge as well in support of our hospital. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Crone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a good turnout at the maple syrup breakfast put on by the Lions Club on Saturday. It was a great event, attended by many. I think I saw Counselor Morton and Counselor Foster there with me, and so that was good. And looking forward, I would remind folks that the North Union Hall has their beef dinner coming up this Saturday. And so if you'd like tickets, I can help you out. And if you are vegetarian, we have two options. It's take it or leave it. It's beef, baby. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Carruthers.
Thank you very much. Members of our community last week were celebrating Shrove Tuesday and Ash Wednesday. And next week, members of our Hindu and Sikh community will be celebrating the Festival of Holi. So we wish them Happy Holi. And the other announcement I want to make is coming up on April 18, the Holland Landing Community Group will be holding the DL on HL, the Down Low on Holland Landing. It's going to be everything Holland Landing, and it'll be held at the community center in Holland Landing during the day on the 18th. And I'll have more details on that in coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Persicini.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couldn't go to the coldest day of the year, but I did go check it out, make sure my money was in there before I went downtown. I had another function going, and it seemed to be a good turnout there as I looked at it. And I'm looking forward to the beef dinner. I do eat beef once in a while, so I'm looking forward. So give me my tickets later, Scott.
Counselor Morton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Scott already mentioned, I did attend the Lions Breakfast, and it was very, very good. And just moving ahead, as Counselor Roy DiClemente does many of her events, both Counselor Crone and myself will be meeting with members of Ward III on the 11th. And we hope that we have a good turnout and that we can actually answer all of their questions the way they should be answered. Well, that's it for me, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to speak briefly about the Coldest Night of the Year Walk. Approximately 100 walkers gathered at Sharon Hope Church. I believe that 100 walkers raised a shade over $37,000. I think there was 5.7 million at last count raised countrywide. They've already sent me the date for next year. That's February 20, 2021. So I'd like to thank Mayor Haxson, Deputy Jaigo and his wife. And Counselor Persicini got called away, but joined my wife Patty and I. Now, we walked the 5K. I'm not sure what the mayor and the deputy walked because we got separated, but it was a great day. And I did not stay for dinner, but they were serving out food like crazy when we left. So it was a great event. Thanks to everybody who supported us. We did have one anonymous walker, and the anonymous worked very good because I still don't know who it was, and I don't know who had joined our team, and nobody came up and said to me at the walk, hey, I'm the one. So thanks to that individual also.
Thank you to you for coordinating it on behalf of council and our staff. Blue Door Shelter, of course, as we know, is in East Gwilhambury. And we are very proud of having that facility for people that need a place to stay. So thank you for coordinating it. $37,000 is a lot of money in a first go. I also wanted to take a couple minutes and talk about the COVID-19 update. We're all certainly aware that there are four more positive cases of COVID-19 in Toronto, and York Region have been confirmed by Ontario Health officials Sunday, bringing the total in the province to 15. Officials reported the new cases involve three people from York Region and one person from Toronto. As a result of the coordinated efforts of our healthcare and public health system, all individuals who have been tested positive have been quickly assessed and isolated. The risk to York Region residents continues to remain low, and there is no evidence of community spread within York Region. Up-to-date information continues to be available on york.ca site. I also receive as a regional representative, or town representative on the region, I receive daily updates, and I will be posting them to Facebook and sending them out to members of council. And they too can do what they would like as well to share. Dr. Currie, our medical officer of health for York Region, is doing a terrific job in keeping us posted on the details. So thank you for that. I wanted to talk a little bit about a couple of upcoming events. Friday, March 6, the East Gwilhambury and Georgina Chambers of Commerce are hosting a women's and business workshop at Link. Tickets are available through the chamber, and you can get them there directly. Saturday, March 7, this Canadian Blood Services is hosting Donor Day at the East Gwilhambury Complex from 9 to noon. I've been in many times, and they are very busy, and they're very grateful to have that facility to have Blood Donor Day. Tuesday, March 10, New Roads is hosting the annual 2020 Women of Excellence Awards. The tickets are available to purchase through Snapt, and I think they need to be purchased within the next couple of days. I think they have a deadline on that. And Tuesday, March 17, during March break, you'll have the opportunity to meet astronaut Chris Hatfield through a Skype right here in our council chambers. The event begins at 12:45, and everyone is asked to register through our Library, Holland Landing, or the Mount Albert Ranch. And as we look out at our seats, we have 103. So I think that if people are very interested in coming, that they should register early. I suspect it may be sold out. With that, I will move to community attributes with Counselor Crone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The community attribute for this week is perseverance. And so I'll just share a little bit with you on that. Perseverance. I will not give up when things get tough. I will stick to my goals and work hard to achieve them despite obstacles and challenges. And when I work with perseverance, I will be steadfast in the pursuit of my objectives, set achievable goals, conquer the insurmountable, have the desire and the willpower to succeed, and the endurance to ensure it goes well. And I will strive for success and learn and grow with failure. I will not fear it. And here's a good quote to wrap it up with. Fall down seven times, stand up eight. Perseverance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I will move to presentations, and I'm sorry, deputations first. We have no deputations at this time. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
To you, Madam Mayor. We did have, receive a deputation beyond the deadline, so if council wishes to acknowledge that deputation, it's certainly up to council. Deputant is A. Paquette and is speaking on behalf of Item L1, Legal and Counsel's, or sorry, the telecommunications tower of 14 Fairburn Gate.
Thank you very much. Members of committee, your pleasure. Allow it. So moved?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Would you introduce our deputant, please?
To you, Madam Mayor. Deputant is A. Paquette, speaking on behalf of Item J1, which is the telecommunications tower of 14 Fairburn Gate.
Welcome. Good to have you with us this morning. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, council members, staff. Reason that I asked to speak today was in regards to the communications tower. I've read the report that's been put out. I just want to make a couple of comments before it goes to decision, and hopefully this'll clear up some of the things that's come up. So the report basically states that Mr. Smith may have the opportunity either to get a letter of non-concurrence or concurrence with conditions. The conditions are to put some trees, which I'm not sure what kind of trees you can put to hide a 96-foot tower, and then a bunch of paperwork that he's got to submit. And then the tower would stay up for three years, providing Broadland is still looking for either fiber to get in or better internet. So the reason I'm here, part of my group as well, some of them are on vacation, couldn't be here today, is the issue that we're having again is, tower was erected, as you all know, without proper protocol against East Gwilhambury protocols, Industry Canada protocols. Nothing's been met to the standards that it was supposed to be. On top of that, Mr. Smith is saying that he needs minimum 50 megabytes of download speeds, which I'm not sure why. Those may be wants, not needs, because I still haven't seen the reason why he needs it. I did some research, and part of the research that Bell has on their website is that a business owner can run a business on five megabytes of speed to do surfing the web. They would need about 10 megabytes of speed to do video streaming. And if they wanted to watch Netflix, which is what a lot of concerns are, it would require a minimum of 25 megabytes to do ultra-high-definition television. I myself am with ExplorNet, which is a local provider. They do have multiple packages with different services. One of the services is LTE, which is a smaller antenna with satellite at the top, which we all have in our neighborhoods. I'm not sure the package is because I'm not on LTE. I'm on satellite, and I just recently upgraded my satellite. And I've submitted to Mr. Romuno some pictures of my speed tests that I've been doing, and I get up to 35-megabyte speed, which is more than sufficient to run internet, Netflix, movies, television, all these things that we're all discussing that the neighborhood wants. So I've asked Mr. Romano if it's possible to get his staff to investigate it, because at this point, all I see is we're taking Mr. Smith's word that he needs 50. Not, again, I don't see the need. There's maybe a want of 50, but maybe not a need. A lot of people want more speed, which I understand. For schooling and stuff, I get it. But at the same time, I don't think it's fair that the neighbors in the immediate neighborhood that are affected by this tower need to look at this thing for three years because of Mr. Smith's wants, not necessarily needs. So there is other services, or are packages out there that can provide faster internet. Just a matter of going out, educating yourself, just like I did. And like I said, I upgraded mine three weeks ago, and I'm getting 35 to 38 megabits of speed now, of download speed. And last Friday, when we had the snowstorm, part of the pictures that I presented, during the middle of the snowstorm, I was getting 33. So it's not like I'm getting five or six. I'm actually getting faster speeds. So that's basically what I want to bring up, because, again, we're seeming to focus on internet when, for us, it's not the internet issue. It's more of a tower issue, where it's located and how ugly it is. And the report is basically telling me that you're going to put some bushes around it, which is not going to hide it. And I understand three years may not seem a long time for some people, but it's a very long time for us. And if we're going to wait for fiber, there's no guarantees when fiber's going to be around. But there is a guarantee right now that there is other means of getting the internet in the neighborhood. And as much as people may not be for satellite or anything else, I have it satellite, and it's a small satellite dish on top of my roof, not a 96-foot tower like has been presented here. So that's basically what I want to bring up, is the fact that there are other options. And I would like, hopefully, somebody to investigate it, that would be part of your staff, to see that there are other options. And again, it's not so much of a, I need 50. It's more of a, I want 50 because I need to do certain things. Well, again, that's his needs. That's not everybody's needs. And for everybody to suffer because of it, I don't think it's fair. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Roy DiClemente to receive the deputation. All those in favor. And that's carried. And I would like to suggest that we move to Item L1, since we have resident in the audience, rather than waiting until we get to the end of our agenda to deal with the report right now. So with that, I would pass the chair over to Counselor Crone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have just one item on our agenda today, and it is in respect to the communication tower on 14 Fairburn Gate West of Warden Avenue. And I'll just read out to you the resolution. Be it resolved that Joint Development Services Legal and Counsel Support Services and Corporate Services Report P. 2020-09 dated March 3, 2020 regarding the telecommunications tower located at 14 Fairburn Gate be received, and that council issue a letter of concurrence to Industry Canada, subject to the owner entering into an agreement with the town within 30 days. Said agreement will address the following conditions. A. The owner to provide additional landscaping at the base of the tower to provide adequate screening to the satisfaction of the town. B. The owner to provide a letter prepared by qualified professional confirming that the tower as constructed is structurally sound and adheres to Health Canada Safety Code 6. And C. The owner agrees to remove the tower at once ground level fiber servicing or acceptable internet service providers are available to the neighborhood. And D. The owner agrees to enter into discussions with the town regarding the relocation, removal of the existing tower should ground level fiber servicing or acceptable internet service providers not be available to the neighborhood within 36 months. And the council direct staff and the broadband subcommittee to continue to work with internet service providers to ensure that internet service is provided to the neighborhood as soon as possible. Having said all that, Mr. Romuno, would you like to add anything to that?
To you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have anything additional to add, aside from the work that the broadband committee and staff are currently undertaking. And the goal is, if council adopts these recommendations, is to continue to work with the committee and the Yorknet and the other internet providers to provide the appropriate internet service to this neighborhood, and if possible, other areas of town, prior to that 36-month period that we've identified there, that we've all heard that Yorknet is currently in the process of laying fiber along Woodbine Avenue. That should be completed by this summer. Again, there's no guarantees with respect to timing of bringing another internet provider in, but we have been in contact with a couple internet providers who say it is feasible to then bring that connection over to the Fairbank community within a short period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Romuno. Can I have a mover for this? Moved by Counselor Carruthers. Before I open it up to questions, I would like to, if I may, say a few words myself and make a couple of recommendations for amendments to this resolution. For me, this is an unfortunate situation for many, many reasons. You know, it's unfortunate that the communities at odds with each other over this. There's people for it, people against it, for very good reasons. Unfortunately, the towers that was erected is not very attractive, and I don't think anyone disputes that, not even the owner. And it's unfortunate that internet is so bad in rural parts of East Gwilhambury, and that our residents have to resort to building these towers. That quite frankly adds nothing to the property values. And I would suggest that errors were made as an organization. The town gave incomplete information to the owner, Mr. Smith, advising him on what was needed to erect his tower. So there's that. Protocols, as a result, were not followed. And of course, we have misinformation that's flowing in the community, and we need to stop that. And so if, from my perspective, if we vote against this tower, we lose control over the situation, because it could be referred to Industry Canada. And quite frankly, there are no guarantees that they will enforce their decision. They could just let it sit and not deal with it, as it's just a residential tower, and the neighborhood would be stuck with the tower for an undetermined period of time, maybe forever. And so I'm convinced, I'm not convinced that if we vote against this tower, I think we could very well be inviting challenges to other towers in the neighborhood. There are some towers that are in excess of 50 feet. And so I would rather that we support a, what I see this as a temporary measure. We vote in favor of it, that we, as a council, can reach an agreement with the tower owner so that we can control the future of this and eventually remove it. And I would encourage my council colleagues to take it upon ourselves to commit to improving our broadband within this community, and that our capabilities are improved, and that we work towards a viable solution in the community. And Mr. Romuno mentioned that we are in discussions with some different ISPs out there, and I can tell you that we have identified funding sources that could be made available to help defray the costs of getting fiber to this community and along the pathway to all the homes, along the pathway to the community. So I think that's good. So what I would like to do, I would like to recommend, if I might, Counselor Carruthers, make a few friendly amendments. Part D of this resolution, we have a timeline of 36 months. I would suggest we change that to 30 months. I know it's not a heck of a lot, but it's within, it keeps it within the term of this council. And I think that's important so that we do not kick this down the road to another council. Quite frankly, I think we can achieve this in a resolution, a favorable resolution to all parties that's within a much shorter timeframe. But three months keeps our feet to the fire to make sure that we could deal with this in this term of council. The second thing I would like to recommend that if, that if the town staff have deemed that a law has been broken, that a fine be levied against the owner to act as a deterrent to avoid future tower erections outside of protocol. And then I'd like to add, F. The council directs staff to seek request for proposal from CRINS. That's the Canadian Radio Telecommunications, Radio Communications Information and Notification Service to investigate handling future residential tower applications. So if, with your indulgence, that's all I have to say about that. Those are my amendments. I now open the floor to any questions or comments, or word smithing of my amendments. Counselor Foster.
So I agree with your amendments. I believe they are a little bit closer to what we need here. I do think that we need to speak a little bit about how we are going to move forward. When we look at D, where it says ground level, or level, ground level fiber servicing or acceptable internet, the deputation we heard this morning certainly tells me that there's some good opportunity there for internet reception. Those are the highest numbers that I've heard so far. And again, the provision is there that we look at that. So how are we going to move forward, or can anyone speak to, how do we move forward with reference exactly to what Mr. Paquette said this morning? Those numbers look like they're, we're almost there.
Mr. Romuno, do you have a comment?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, I have spoken to the speaker. Our information from ExplorNet, I think it is, is that, and we will continue to dialogue with them, is that they have a certain capacity limit. And last time we spoke, they weren't taking on any new customers. But it is a question of preference of an individual owner with respect to the level of service that they're expecting. So in exploring options, I mean, all options are on the table. But the, you know, the priority in moving forward is to continue to work with the Yorknet and the other internet providers to try and get the fiber to the community. But as well, you know, there are other options. There could be other towers in other locations of the rural area. So everything's on the table. But right now, our broadband committee has been working with Yorknet to try and get that fiber optic to the neighborhood as soon as possible. With respect to the conditions, you know, the first condition is to, if council agrees, we want to, as Counselor Crone mentioned, we want to execute a agreement between the town and the owner of 14 Fairbank, Mr. Smith, for his commitment to these conditions with respect to, yes, looking at landscaping, providing a professional report confirming the structural integrity, but also a commitment where we would then have the enforcement that once internet is available to the community, he agrees that the tower will be removed at his expense in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Romuno. I might add that some of the funding sources that we've identified, they have a condition that it be spent this year. So there is a definite incentive for the ISP to get cracking on laying this fiber cable. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Foster?
I just want to make sure that we move ahead with the proper testing regarding what was given to us this morning. And another thing that keeps popping up to me, we talked And another thing that keeps popping up to me, we talk about landscaping around the base of the tower. I don't know that that says anything about preventing someone from trying to climb that tower. And I'm not sure how much better that makes it look, but I think from a safety point of view, we need to look at that also.
Thank you. Mayor Haxson, you had a comment?
Thank you very much. This is probably one of the most difficult decisions that we've made in our term here as members of this council. Feel for the residents, understand the owner of the tower and his desires. This seems to me to be the best scenario that we have in front of us here. I know that 36 months seems like a long time, but my question would be to Mr. Romano, we can pick any number we want, but what is the right number in assuring that we will be able to achieve that? I'd like to say 24 months or 18 months, but if it's not attainable, then it's just a number on a page.
Mr. Romano?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, it's a good point, Madam Mayor. You know, there's no guarantees, but our commitment is to continue to work with Yorknet because they have told us that fiber will be along Woodbine by the end of the summer. So then it is really just entering into discussions, which have already occurred with the Internet provider who is willing to then bring that over to the community. You know, optimistically, you know, we're hoping within a year, a year and a half. But again, we felt that three, you know, 36 months would provide us with that flexibility, but the goal is to try and achieve Internet service to their community sooner rather than later. And as Councilor Crohn mentioned, there are funding opportunities available as well to these Internet providers, so that's an incentive for these providers to take this project on. And we've heard that it's feasible for them to do so.
Madam Mayor?
The last thing I want to do is change the timing and then be sitting here a couple years from now saying, oh, well, we weren't able to achieve it. I would much rather have a timing that we are in this council chamber and say, we've got everything put together and we're a year ahead of where we thought we were going to be. So I just wonder where we're, it's just a number. As a member of the Yorknet Board through the region, I know that there, every meeting that we have at Yorknet, there are changes taking place. And every opportunity that East Guellembury has had to talk about their needs has been listened to. So I have great faith in Yorknet. It is a public board of directors that are operating Internet advisement, and I have the utmost confidence that they will, when talking about dates and times, will be able to give us some tighter lines, I would think, by the end of the summer. But I'm okay with, I'm okay with the 30 months, but I would like to make sure it's realistic. And if we can change it to 24 or 18, as time goes on, perhaps it's a moving number as things change within our community and with Yorknet. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And on that point, I suggested 30 months because I thought it was important to keep it within this term of council so that it holds us all accountable. We don't kick it down the road to a future council to deal with. I don't think that's right. I'm of the mind, better to underpromise and overdeliver, gives us a little wiggle room. And, you know, quite frankly, I think as the ward councillor for this area, I want to be able to, come election time, I want to be able to walk into that neighborhood without having to wear a Kevlar vest. I want to be in there and have some good news to share. Councilor Carruthers, you had a comment?
Thank you. I think the fact that it's within 30 months is showing that we want it to be less than 30 months, and I think it's good to have a target there that won't change, that we want it done by then. If we put 18 months and then we come back in 18 months and say, oh, we need another six months on top of that, I don't think that sends a very good message to the community. So I do like that it's within 30 months, and I hope it will be less than that. I weigh, I looked through this and listened to the number of meetings that we've had and been weighing this very carefully. As the mayor says, it's a very difficult decision. I think that there's a number of issues that have been dealt with with the resolutions that are before us. To Councilor Foster's point about climbing, I think it's always a danger with any of the towers. There's a lot that are 50 feet. If a child climbed a 50-foot tower, they're going to get injured as much as if they climbed an 89-foot tower. So if we want to put tower guards on all towers, there's going to be awful lot across the community. So I don't think singling out this one as a danger is really prudent unless we do all towers within the municipality. As far as ExplorNet goes, we've heard that's not available to everyone. And as far as satellite in general, I have very slow Internet speeds at my house. We've looked at satellite and ruled it out because of the latency factor and the upload speed. So it's one thing if you're looking at Netflix, it's another thing if you're trying to teleconference or Skype. So one person's needs is very different from another person's needs. And I think that trying to look at our neighbors and judge what their needs are is also a dangerous slope that we don't want to get on. So I'm happy to support the recommendations today, although it's difficult. I think it's a good compromise and will help us move forward on this issue. And as Councilor Crohn has said, we'll keep it in our control and be able to have a final outcome to this within 30 months. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Roy DeClemente, you had a question?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I think, you know, folks here have talked about how the need is palpable. I think it's backward that service levels are so appalling that residents have had to take matters into their own hands and get creative. And whether that's Mr. Smith or his neighbors, they've all had to find ways to work around this, and I don't think that's right. And I think this is the catalyst that would, that helps us push that, because I know I've been sitting here for 10 years saying, we've got to deal with Internet, and we haven't been able to move that needle. And so I think this is the catalyst to make that positive change that we've been looking for. If I may, Mr. Chair, thank you for your leadership on making some suggestions on this. I'm wondering if you or someone else can speak a little bit more about CRINS and what the RFP is and what that resolution means. I don't have a lot of familiarity with that.
Sure, happy to take a poke at it, Mr. Romano, if you want to fill in the blanks that I've left. CRINS is, it's an organization that effectively we could outsource our tower location protocols to. They would vet the applicants, make sure that everything is followed to the T, and make sure that all information is shared with the applicant. We have a number of neighboring municipalities that use their service, Uxbridge being probably the closest. And I, this is a non-binding amendment. It's certainly to seek a request for proposal to get staff to investigate it. My assumption is that it would be brought back to council to decide whether or not we want to enact it. But I think it gives us, and I've been thinking about this myself when this whole issue arose, and I know one of our, the leaders in the community at Star had suggested this in one of his letters to council, and I think it deserves merit of review. So, Mr. Romano, do you have anything else to add?
To you, Mr. Chair. No, apart from, I think you're accurate. I mean, they would administer the municipality's protocol and would guide a proposal for another tower through the public consultation process, ensure all the background reports are submitted, et cetera.
If I may, are there other services that provide the same facility to us? I'm just wondering whether we would, whether we're sole sourcing through by identifying this particular organization or whether we would simply direct staff to seek out some sort of a service to assist us with future applications?
I'm not aware of any other services, but I could, I'm sure staff would be happy to investigate.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not aware of any others, but we will certainly investigate if there are any other providers and report back to council.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, I would feel more comfortable, happy to support the motion since it would be bringing us back options. It may be that this is the only facility available to us, but I want to make sure that we're leaving it as open-ended as possible in case there are other parties that might want the business.
Would you propose, say, CRINS or other like organizations and include that into the amendment?
I think we could simply say that council directs staff to seek a request for proposals from a service to handle future residential tower applications. And whether that goes out to CRINS or other organizations that we're being as open-ended as possible.
Sure, I'm fine with that. Mr. Clerk, were you able to capture that?
I know the intent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Persisini, you had a question, and then Counselor Morton?
Well, she actually asked the question I wanted to ask, but I had another, since I can't see 100% there. What happens if you, the Internet gets, someone provides Internet before the 30 months? Does that mean they have to take it down? So make sure.
Yes, that's the intent.
I just, I can't see that far, but I'm sure, I hope that's what it says, I think.
Counselor Morton, you had a question, comment?
It's not so much a question as a comment. I listened to the teachers at some of the meetings that were attended by us particularly, and those students need the ability to do reports and without having to travel away from their homes to do those, to do those reports. And I understand that firsthand from my granddaughter, who is in high school, and she is running into some of that issues even in the Mount Albert area. So it's very difficult, as other council members have said, for us to really support or not support this. And the mayor and I have been in a situation many years ago that it took us many, many meetings to address another issue. And I feel for both sides, and it is difficult, but we do not have any other choice, I don't believe, although I'm not comfortable with the 36 months. And as the mayor said, I would sooner it was less than 30 as well. So as fast as we can get this moved ahead, then reluctantly, I can support what we have ahead of us.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call a vote. All those in favor, not opposed, motion is carried. Do we have any other feedback from Mr. Romano to share with the committee?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, not on this item, but I'd just like to advise council of, as a notice with respect to our Highway 44 employment corridor secondary plan that's currently underway, we will be scheduling our second open house for March 26. It's between 6:00 and 8:00 at the sports complex. The purpose of that, the second open house is to present the preliminary options with respect to the secondary plan, road pattern, land use designations for public review and feedback. And our goal is then, again, to continue to work with our consultants to bring forward the preferred option for council later on this year. We'll hold a public statutory meeting before the summer, and the goal is to have a council adopt a secondary plan before, you know, the summer, the very latest, the fall. The formal notices for the public open house will be placed in our local paper starting March 5, and will run a couple weeks right up into the March 26 open house meeting. Again, just a notice for everyone, it will also be placed on our town's website.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from committee to Mr. Romano? Okay, motion to receive verbal update from Counselor Roy DeClemente. Do we need to vote on that? I guess we do, all in favor? Okay. Thank you very much. I would just like, if I could just conclude this, I want to thank folks that were interested in this issue coming out about the tower. I want to assure you that it's in our, in all our interests to get this issue resolved favorably so that all sides are happy. And quite frankly, I would like to see within the 30 months sooner that all the towers will be able to come down in that neighborhood, because I think we can achieve that. So I know this, the outcome wasn't as favorable to everyone today as they would have liked, but I think this is the best of a bad situation. I see a raised hand from the, I'm going to hand it, I'm going to hold you right there, sir. I'm just going to hand the chair back to the mayor and let her, your worship, deal with this. Thank you very much.
So I'm anticipating your question, and if I don't answer it, then I will take your hand. And so we voted today in council and committee, excuse me, and in two weeks' time, we will ratify our decision. So there's two weeks in between today and our next council meeting, at which time then council, which would be a afternoon committee of the whole and an evening council meeting, and that was done intentionally so residents could come back. At this point, this will, this decision will be moved to that meeting in two weeks' time. However, it is not finalized until such time as we have the final vote and ratify it on two weeks today, and that date would be?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I believe that is March 24th.
March 24th. So, and contrary to what some people might think, there's no discussion that's going to take place between now and then. The decision that we have has been made, and there will not be any other discussion until that time. And should members of council want to talk to that decision at that time, then that is the time to take place. So, did I answer your question? Okay, would you like to come up to the microphone, please? Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarification for those that may be watching on live streaming, you had indicated it was two weeks from now. With the March break, it's actually three weeks from today's date, which is Tuesday, March 24.
That's why we have a clerk to correct me. Thank you very much. Probably one of the most important decisions we've made in this term, and we're making sure that it is the right date. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, please.
So thank you for letting me speak again. So it's just a question. So I understand you're going to go ahead and vote the way that you feel, which is fine. There's nothing I can do about it. Who gets to decide, and what is the level of acceptance of what is acceptable for proper Internet? What's that level? That's the question I didn't hear asked, because he's asking for 50. I got 35, so where, that's my question. Because if it's going to take two years, three years to get fiber or do whatever, who, what is the level of acceptance and who gets to decide this is achievable? Because right now, I got 35. So I understand what you said about video streaming, but again, that's not everybody's needs. So I'm just wondering what, who gets to decide that? Thank you for letting me ask.
Thank you very much. Good question. Staff, would you like to, I have an idea, but if you'd like to go ahead, Mr. Velchek, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I would suggest that certainly staff working with the broadband working group would come back with information to help inform what we believe is within an acceptable range.
So we'll be working at it. It isn't that it's pie in the sky. There will be staff, there will be working with individuals on our broadband committee as well as individuals that, as we're looking at hiring someone from outside as well to work along with us. And input, I'm sure we will have from our community as we move forward. Counselor Carruthers?
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate that it's not just about download speeds, it's about upload speeds, it's about latency as well. So it's not a one number that suits everyone. Like I said, if you're just streaming, you only look at your download speeds. If you're video conferencing, you need to look at latency, you need to look at upload speeds.
Mr. Velchek?
Madam Mayor, I'm also reminded by our Ministry of Economic Development that there are federal standards in place that we would be looking to as well to be informed on this matter. this matter.
Thank you very much. Okay. With that, I will go back to our agenda and pick up item F, and that's legal and council support services with Counselor Foster in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item on the agenda this morning. It's legal and council support services 2020-02, a report regarding clandestine drug lab cost recovery with a bylaw, but future. Mr. Horner, any comments?
Just, just to introduce, this, this is an interesting initiative of the Police Services Board. Back in December, they wrote council and were asking for assistance from all of the local municipalities. And what they were finding is that they're finding that they're attending at illegal drug labs and incurring significant expense. And that's expense that's related to attending, dismantling, and remediating these labs. So the, the proposal of the board is that each local municipality enact a bylaw that would permit, would permit the local municipality to invoice the landowner for the costs that were incurred by YRP and the costs that were incurred by the town in remediating these sites. So in default of payment, the idea is that this amount could be added to the tax roll. So we've looked at the proposal, and there's one other municipality, Markham, that actually has a bylaw on the books. And we think it's a reasonable proposal, a good proposal, and we're ready to, excuse me, we're ready to recommend a bylaw to council and to, to give, to give effect to, to the proposal, which would make us the second municipality in the region with this type of cost recovery mechanism on the books.
Thank you, Mr. Horner. Can I have a mover before we move to questions? Counselor Persicini? Any questions from committee? Counselor Cruthers?
Yes, I just wanted to get a little bit better handle on why the police and the town are doing abatement and remediation, and why that is not put solely on the owner of the property.
I can try to answer, answer, but the chief will probably have better practical experience. I think, I think the idea is that in a perfect world, that the owner takes, the owner takes responsibility and the owner cleans up, but I think the experience is that, you know, perhaps the, the owner of the property isn't around or isn't available, isn't prepared to, to assume the cost. And so then what we're looking at is a, it becomes a safety situation, a nuisance situation. So it's important that somebody kind of weighed in and take responsibility, and that's, that's falling on the, on the police.
Thank you. So the first is try and get them to do it themselves, and this is a worst-case scenario.
It's the worst-case scenario, but I think, you know, typically, I think typically when you're dealing with an illegal situation, it's, it, your, your worst-case scenario, you fall into it pretty quickly.
Any further questions? Counselor Crone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Mr. Horner, I would assume this would allow us to put a lien on the property so that we would have some security to cover the costs?
That's, that's the exact scenario. So the, so the way it would work practically is the, the town would receive an invoice from the, from YRP indicating what their costs are. The town would send it, would send an invoice out to the property owner, please pay by a date. In default of payment, what we would do is we would add it to the tax roll. And when it's added to the tax roll, you know you're going to get paid. You know you're going to get paid when the property sells or, or when the property owner goes to refinance.
The, the distinction of calling it a clandestine drug operations, would that, would that envelope cover, say, an illegal grow operation as well?
It would cover an illegal grow up, yes.
Further questions? Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. Through you to Mr. Horner. You mentioned in preparing an invoice for YRP, I'm wondering the cost of our, our emergency services that probably are the first ones there and the last ones to leave. How, how do we make sure that, that that's covered as well?
Both services are part of the mix. So we'll, we'll receive the invoice from YRP, we'll add our own costs, whether it's emergency services or whether it's internal admin, and prepare a bill and a charge.
Thank you. I wondered if I could just hear from our chief about the kinds of resources that are fire put into an evening like this.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, outside of the normal scope of response, quite often, we're required to assist either the Office of the Fire Marshal or York Regional Police when they investigate or dismantle these types of operations. So we can, it involves staff and resources just basically to assist, to provide support and comfort as far as sometimes a meal replacement kind of thing, or lighting, heavy lifting, some moving, that sort of thing. Staff and resources, you know, would just add up the time.
It's a team effort.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Cruthers?
Thank you. I just want to get an idea of the cash flow here. If we get an invoice from YRP, it could be years before it, the homeowner pays. Are we on the hook for that with YRP, or is it just something that sits on the books? I just don't want us to have that money on our, on our rolls.
The, that's one reason why we're proposing to enter into the MOU. And the MOU makes it clear that the town has no responsibility for this expense, and so it's not an expense that, it's not an expense we're liable for, it's not an expense we need to kind of carry on the books. It's, it's a goodwill effort and part of the town to assist YRP.
Thank you.
Any further questions? It seems to me that some of these questions will be answered within the bylaw, obviously. So I believe we can move forward with a vote, all in favor, and that is carried. Anything further for committee, Mr. Horner?
Nothing to add, but happy to take any questions.
Anything for Mr. Horner? Seeing none, I will pass the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're under item G, administration with myself in the chair. At this time, we do not have any reports. Mr. Webster, do we have anything to report out to members of committee?
I do, Madam Mayor. Actually, we have some good news to share with council today. The, our local MPP, Caroline Mulrooney, has a significant role in the provincial government, and she attended our town offices over the last several weeks, and with the main purpose in seeing a profile from our staff team on a municipal modernization program. And there's a couple of folks here I'd like to recognize that are on the Business Solutions Advisory Team that we, has been formed internally. Laura Hannah and Tara Lavedie did a very nice presentation, Margot Bejine assisted as well, to the minister and her staff of how we've taken a real leadership role with the funding from the province. And I just want to remind folks here that we did receive $725,000. And, and from dealing with my colleagues throughout Ontario, we have seven projects up and running focused on improving service to our residents and programs. So, so we're very proud of that initiative. We'll be reporting to council on updates as well from, from that team. And just on Friday, we received word to, to your worship that we actually have also received additional funding for the next phase. And so essentially, we received another $85,000. We'll post this on our next council for, for formal public receipt. But we continue to, to receive grant funding, and we're doing good things with it as well. So just wanted to bring that update to council at this time.
Thank you very much. Any questions with Mr. Webster? Could I have a motion to receive? Counselor Crone, all those in favor? That's carried. We'll move to item H, and that's emergency and community safety services with Counselor Roy DiClemente in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no items on our prepared agenda. Chief, do you have anything to bring forward at this time?
With respect, no.
Members of committee, anything to raise? Seeing none, I'll turn the chair back to you.
Thank you very much. We're at item I, and that's corporate services with Counselor Morton in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have nothing under corporate services today either. And Mr. Velchett, do you have any comments you wish to bring forward?
Not at this time, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions for Mr. Velchett? Hearing none, I turn the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're at item J, and that's community parks, recreation, culture with Counselor Persicini in the chair, and we do have some reports here.
Thank you. That's good. We have one item there. Okay, community park and recreation and culture report to CPRC 2020-06, Taste of, Tapestry of Taste update, page nine to 14. General Manager Comerson, do you have any comments on this?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is a brief update on the planning efforts of staff and our partners for Tapestry of Taste for 2020. Includes a fulsome update on our, on our partners that we're working with, with the event or the festival. And we've, we've also recommended some adjustments to the site and, and some further requests of council. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Crone. Any question from the committees? Yes, can I have Cruthers for your comments there?
Thank you. On behalf of the Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, they are hoping that they can play a part in this festival, given that it's Tapestry of Taste. It seems very fitting to have them included, and I'm hoping that they can be included in the planning stages. Thanks.
Any other comments from the committees? Yes, Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, through you to staff, while I'm fine to have the, because it's a town organized event, to have the licensing of the food trucks and vendors and the fire inspection fees waived, I just want to make sure that we are keeping track of those expenses as we, as they are somewhat significant, because there's specialized staff who spend a fair amount of time and effort to make sure that the, the event is safe. I just want to make sure we're keeping track of those, even though they're in kind.
Yes, could I have General Manager Comerson?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I've noted that, and typically, we will monitor the staff time for inspection in particular with our fire service, and there typically is a internal reconciliation to cover those costs.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, there's no further questions. It was moved by Counselor Crone, and all in favor, opposed, motion carried. I have no other items. Do you have any more updates, General Manager Comerson, or?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further at this time.
Okay, that's it from me, and I'll move it back to Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're at item K, and that's community infrastructure and environmental services with Counselor Cruthers in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items today to make up for the areas that hadn't, had no reports. Two of them are good news, one of them is no news. So I'm going to turn it over to General Manager Molinari to take us through the first item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is simply an update on the Blue Box transition. Essentially, the province is looking to move from paying, paying up to 50% of the Blue Box costs to 100%, which is good news and at the end of the day. However, we're currently at a point where the framework for that new program is currently being developed, and we just really wanted to give council an update that there's going to be some decisions with respect to when the town wishes to transition to full producer responsibility. So the N6 have been working together, as you know, and have a, a long-term collection contract. And as a result, the N6 have to work together on, on providing a, a combined front such that, such that we would all be transitioning at the same time. So we will be returning in, within the next couple of months with a report in order to, to get, to give council an update and also to confirm the date, the year in which we would be transitioning to this full producer responsibility.
Thank you. So this is just a heads up for council to know that this is coming. Can I have a motion to receive? Counselor Persicini, is there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Second motion is about our drinking water system. Mr. Molinari?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an annual report, and is actually a good news story. Again, our water system is tested regularly, and this is just a, the 2019 Water Summary Report. All good news, all of the town's systems are functioning as per, and in fact, the town's received 100% compliance on a number of items, and, and achieved excellent results with, with the audits that have been performed. As, as an extra addition, we've included a, an item in here with regards to non-revenue water, and staff continue to work closely on that, and we will be returning to council with a further update on, on our findings and discussions with the region on that matter.
Thank you, and thank you and your staff for keeping our water so safe. It's great when we get these reports showing we got the all clear. Can I have a motion to receive this report? Counselor Foster, any questions? Counselor Morton?
Comment first, but then a question. Congratulations to staff. This is an amazing report, and believe it or not, I did read it word for word, center to center, and, but something did pop up at me that I'd like to know the answer to, or at least to find out how they do it, and that's the water theft. Where do they steal the water from?
Mr. Molinari?
Through you, Madam Chair. There's a number of different ways. Someone can bypass their meter, physically run piping that would bypass the meter. Someone could go to a fire hydrant and open it up and fill a piece of equipment with water from, from that particular fire hydrant. There's a number of different ways that that can happen.
Not that I want to know how to do it, but I was just wondering how anyone else can do it.
No. No swimming pool.
There's people online taking notes. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Crone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was a little suspicious. The Counselor Morton was complaining the other day about a high-water bill, so maybe she's looking for it. I'm just teasing. There's, there's a reference in this report, and I'd like to echo Counselor Morton's comments. This is a great report, thank you very much. 100% compliance is good. I understand this is the report that keeps all of us out of jail if things go bad, so that's good to know. But my, my question is about the water loss, and that the, it's mentioned that the Ontario Water Works Association estimate water loss anywhere between 6% and 25%. I was wondering if you had a handle on, on where we stand with respect to that number, or is that part of the, the ongoing investigation that we have right now? It's obviously very, you know, concerning to folks of us around this table that we get a grip on that.
Mr. Webster?
I'm not the town engineer, but I will speak on this because it was an important matter, the, the water loss. Council positioned it as a priority. So the group, I've been personally attending the meetings, and the range that's cited there is, my understanding is typical in systems, somewhere in the 5% to 25%. Ours was at the outer boundary of the 25, as you recall. And I'm pleased to advise that our consultant has led a staff team of folks, and as a step one, and so we've done a full reconciliation, not only of 2018, but also 2019. And we seem to be moving in a positive direction from that. There has been with senior regional staff, we certainly did get the region's attention, and I know our Madam Mayor has, has discussed it as well as I have discussed it directly with their CAO, and we're dealing with this as a real priority. We will have the ability to provide a full update to council, and the reason I'm speaking now is we were given direction for March 24th. We're working diligently on the matter, and as I said, in a positive direction, and with our consultant, we feel that if we could report at the April 7th, council at 1 o'clock PM, we would have, we'd be in a better position at that time to start getting into rolling up our sleeves and getting into the numbers and reasons and some strategies moving forward to, to help rectify this problem. So I'm looking for council's concurrence or direction to as well amend the prior resolution from the- from the 24th, re-report back to April 7th, 2020, at the council meeting for reporting back.
So moved by Counselor Crone. We have a motion to receive on the table before we take the motion to change the previous resolution by council. I just wanted to add that when we're looking at water loss, I've had lots of conversations with General Manager Molinari. And we're not expecting that there's gushers under the ground, that the water is seeping out. There's a number of different issues, and one of the biggest ones is just trying to rectify billing cycles when the region is billing us versus when we're billing our residents. Remember, we also had all those old meters that were slowing down. So there's a bunch of water going to houses that wasn't, that weren't getting built with the new meters that should be taken care of. So there's a lot, a number of different issues that can be at play here, and I look forward to that report. Is there any other questions on this motion before we move to Counselor Crone's? Seeing none, all in favor of receipt? That's carried. And then, Mr. Clerk, we have a motion to edit the date of our previous resolution to come, for the report to come back. Can you put something up for us? Since we have a motion on the books already directing staff to come back March 24th, should the motion state that this is a change in date? I just, I don't want someone looking at our records and saying, oh, it's the 24th. Thank you. Counselor Roy DeClemente?
I'm, thank you. I'm just curious as to why we're not able to report, or at least give us an update on the 24th. We had talked about the first quarter, that was three months. We had given staff 11 months previous. I think that's how many months it was. It was quite a long time when we approved the, I think it was the 2019 budget. We asked for some information. That report never came to us. Then we gave them, when we approved the 2020 budget, we said, okay, how about first quarter? So that was another three months. I'm not sure why we need to wait. I know that this particular report that we've just received said, we know what, that it was, the water loss was 25% in 2018. We don't have 2019's numbers yet. Maybe that report can just tell us what they've done so far and what next steps are. I'm just trying to understand what, why we need to delay another two weeks. If someone can help me understand that, I'd be happy to support it.
Thank you. Mr. Webster, you were speaking to this. Did you want to let us know why the change in date, and if it's possible to bring something forward on the 24th?
The, I think it would be best, instead of piecemealing it, to come back and almost have it as a focus, a workshop type of topic. And we were proposing to dedicate a significant portion of that council, the first council of April. A part of it is agenda management. I have to be honest, we have a number of large items as well coming on the 24th. And just wanting to make sure that the meetings are manageable in length, and so we can focus on the other topics that we also will be dealing. So that's from a CAO perspective. Mr. Molinari might be able to shed a little more light on what the consultant and the team, and how two weeks might be helpful to that.
Further to CEO Webster's comments, we just met with the consultant last week, and an extra period of time would allow us to get his presentation put together properly and develop, bring back a more fulsome report on this that's complete. I think we're trending into a good area on this, and we wanted to make sure that when we came back to council that we had that, the full story as opposed to just a partial story.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Roy DeClemente? Do you like that answer? Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Crone that the water loss report expected for March 24th be changed to April the 7th committee of the whole. Any other comments or questions on this? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. We have one last report, and this is on the diversion initiatives. And there's one piece in there I want to bring to your attention. King also has moved to the textile recycling. So as far as textile recycling goes, we're the last of the N6 to adopt this. And I want to thank staff for really digging into this and answering all the questions that council had on this matter when it last came before us. And I will turn it over to you, Mr. Molinari.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So really, this is, council had some questions when the environmental advisory committee had brought their reports forward with the two waste diversion initiatives. And staff have reviewed and had a look, spoken with other N6, proposing to piggyback with other N6 municipalities on delivery of some of the services. In other cases, just enter into long-term contract with the service provider for the two initiatives that were proposed, being textile recycling and battery cycling. Staff feel that both of these initiatives can be implemented and function just as well as they are in our, with our municipal partners.
Thank you very much. It's good to have others going before us that we can piggyback on. We have three motions before us. The first is to receive. The second is to execute no-cost contract with Diabetes Canada for textile recycling. And the third is to execute no-cost agreement with Raw Materials Company for the battery collection. Can I have someone move those three? Counselor Foster? Is there any questions on any of these? Counselor Roy DeClemente?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I noticed a couple of weeks ago that there was actually a textile collection on private property in East Willimbury. And I wondered, I'm assuming that the answer is that it's up to that particular property owner. It's a commercial plaza. It's up to that property owner to maintain those, and that our staff would not be involved with dealing with those particular diversion sites. They are from the same supplier than the same provider. So just want to make sure that there's some clarity there.
That's right. I'll turn it over to Mr. Molinari, but I believe the report says that Diabetes Canada is wholly responsible for cleaning up their sites. Is that correct, Mr. Molinari?
Through you, Madam Chair. That is, that is correct. The town would be operating, with the agreement with the, with Diabetes Canada would be for only boxes that were installed on town, at town facilities and on town property. Our agreement wouldn't be for, on private property. The individual property owners would have their own agreements with Diabetes Canada and maintain that contract with them separately.
Thank you. I think it might be helpful for residents because there's already this service available in our community that we, that we mentioned, that it's not just at those locations, but that there are, there may be others within the community when we're doing our communication that we're clear about that.
I think that's a great idea. Good. Noted by communications, hopefully. Yes, she's nodding. Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Ah, Mayor Haxson?
Thank you very much. I spoke the last time that I was not in favor of the bins. And I, particularly when you see some of them out in the community that have, are overflowing and are not maintained. I have further investigated those that I don't like, and they are not Diabetes Canada. And so I have changed my opinion and wanted to let everyone know that I am keen on collecting. I think this is really important. It is good for our environment, our community, and I'm going to keep an eye on. I noticed that one of the points in our report here was that they will attend anywhere between 24 and 72 hours with a complaint. So I expect that they do, because I don't see that the diabetes ones are an issue, but some of the others still are out there, and they're not very pretty. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's some very good points, and the overflowing just shows the need for more. So I think this is a very good contract that we're looking at, and I thank staff for all the work that they've done on putting this together and answering all of the committee's questions. Can I have a vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Thank you. Mr. Molinari, do you have anything to add under CIES?
Nothing further at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the committee with any questions? Counselor Crone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to just ask staff, first, thank them for the great reports on water quality. I think everyone takes assurance that it's safe. But I'd like, maybe at a request of a future date in the council, we could talk about some of the work that's being done with the region on the aesthetics of the water, especially in Mount Albert, where we've had some issues there. It's a real bone of contention with a lot of folks, and I don't blame them. The water's not cheap, and you want to make sure that you're getting, you know, good quality. So I was hoping that maybe in the future, we could have a report on the progress that is being made on improving the aesthetic water quality, and certainly in Mount Albert. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the same question for Mr. Molinari, so I'll turn it back to him for a quick answer on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, we can report back on the status of that overall process. Right now, they're going through an EA. There will be a public consultation process as part of that. But we can certainly reach out to the region and provide a bit of an update as to where they are and some of the timelines that can be expected.
Thank you. Is there any further questions or comments from committee? Seeing none, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We did deal with item L, and I do believe that we also dealt with anything else that was within that area. And so I will move to item M, and that's other business. Is there any other business? Go ahead, Counselor Crowthers.
Thank you. I wanted to ask CEO Webster about sick days for our employees. As an employer in the community, we lead by example. And with COVID-19, you know, we're, many things we're hearing, wash your hands thoroughly and often, don't touch your face, and stay home if you're sick. So I just wanted to hear from you about how we are supporting our staff and making sure that people are not coming to work or feeling that they need to come to work when they're sick.
Well, I can assure you that we're closely working with and following our lead from York Region. York Region, as we know, is the, has mandate for public health in York Region and for all residents. And we are monitoring their direction to employees and staff at this point in time. Maybe I could ask Ms. Collette, we've been taking, I would say, a little bit of an understated approach to this point in time, but with the escalation on a daily basis, I think you may see a more robust action plan coming from us at the municipal level.
Thank you. My concern is mainly around sick days. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Yes, actually, in discussions with my colleague here, Laura Hannah, and the chief, we're actually having a meeting this afternoon, and we have been watching this very closely. And as CEO Webster indicated, we will be giving our staff a more updated report, I would expect, tomorrow. So we have been watching it closely and seeing where this is going. So thank you for the question.
Wonderful. I just want to assure that our staff feel supported in staying home if they're sick. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business? Counselor Roy DeClemente?
Just further to that, I think while it's important to, for us to review our policies with sick days with respect to our staff, which we do have a very, a very good place, we wouldn't be one of the best employers in the area if we didn't have such forward-thinking policies. I think it's more of an emergency management question. I don't know if anybody's been into one of our local warehouse stores lately, but yesterday there was absolutely no bottled water to be had. And, which is odd, because we've got such a great water system, as we've seen. And so for me, I think it's more just ensuring that our emergency management system is in place, and so that people who are responsible for essential services, like our drinking water system, or first responders and so on, that we have those coverages and those plans in place should, should the situation become so extreme that we end up in a pandemic situation and everybody is on sick, is off sick. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing no other issues, item N is our adjournment, and we will adjourn at 11:23. Moved by Counselor Persicini. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. We will take about a 15-minute break and then come back. We have some private